So with that, let's start tonight's meeting. I'm going to share the screen. And you can see the agenda. Matt, can you see the agenda?
Yeah.
All right, good. So I'd like to call to order the June 22nd, 2020 Town of Wakefield Planning Board Meeting. And as you know, we're still under the governor's orders suspending certain provisions to the open meeting. So we are taking care of that. And this has been going really well. So kudos to the Town of Wakefield and especially Sherri Dalton and Todd, making sure these meetings are set up and working. I was able to claim the host tonight without a problem. That's a good thing. So the minutes from the previous meeting, I didn't receive meeting minutes. I don't know if anybody else did.
I haven't done them yet, Bill.
Okay. And well, let's table that. We could discuss it at the end if we need to. The public hearing this evening, LOVUS AV Extension, that's to be continued. And you can see the notes at the very bottom of the agenda. The LOVUS AV Extension preliminary plan was filed on November 13th, 2018, and last revised. And you could read through this. But what's important is the planning board's deadline to file the LOVUS AV Extension decision is September 30th, 2020. So we won't be hearing from that tonight. And thank you for making that happen. Let's see. Other business, 14 Montrose School Lane Construction in a land area protected by restrictive covenants. This was on our agenda last meeting, and you might remember we, Chuck and Cheryl Reeves approached or put together a plan and sent it to the Building Department. Building Department notified Paul Revis that it's in a restrictive covenant. And they discussed it. I went out to meet Chuck and Cheryl Reeves at their house on Montrose School Lane to review the area where they're looking to put a pool proposed. And they have a plot plan from Hays with the location. During last meeting, we had some, we had a good discussion about the trees that were taken down and possibly why they were taken down. Paul Revis, our town planner for the next week, he could not find a record of any discussion or any correspondence to those trees being taken down by order of the planning board or by the town planner. The Reeves remembered a conversation and had one of the DPW, I believe Chuck mentioned it was, sorry, I'm going to unmute you. He had Dennis Fazio come out to review the trees where they then understood the carpenter ants, I believe, infestation, and the trees were ill or dying. And maybe three or four trees were removed. I can't remember exactly, but we can review that tonight as well. Part of the discussion, the planning board asked the Reeves to look at the pool design to see exactly where it's located and the amount of patio and fence around it as well. There was also a comment that a neighbor, a budding, the back, is in good standing with the Reeves and to ask if there was a letter that could be sent. And I did receive an email message this afternoon from Caitlin, Kate, I can't remember the last name, but the neighbor on the other side of his fence, of the Reeves' fence. And I can read that later on. I think that's just about everything in a recap. I know, just looking at my notes. So with this, I just want to, let me see if I can switch, just so we can see the plan. Did that switch so you can see the large plan of Montrose?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So you can see Lowell Street and from Lowell Street, Montrose School Lane. This was developed. And one question that came up that I don't believe was answered, that I have in my notes, is whether the Reeves were an original owner or they purchased their house from an original owner. The property-
We are the original owners.
You are the original owners. Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. So I'm going to highlight, wow, that's nice and big. I'm highlighting that border of the property. You could see, it looks like it's right there. So there's the Reeves' property, and you can see the area that has the hatching. The area that has the hatching and where these trees are located. There's one, two, three, four, five that looks like they've been removed from 12-inch, 14-inch, and 24-inch, and maybe a little bit more inch larger oaks or pines. I think they were oaks.
Oaks.
Yep, thank you. And this 24-inch, Chuck, that's the one that remains?
Yeah, that's the big double-
Right. And there's a garden over here.
Yep.
Okay. Here is the revised plot plan that the Reeves had, I believe, Hays Engineering, okay, complete. And just to zoom in a little bit, you can see outlined in blue, looks like the area, the proposed pool, the pool is now aligned with the corner of the lot here. And you can see this is that back property line. There's the one tree that remains. There's a little garden here in the corner. And if you remember from the pictures, which I could bring up again, we're looking at how the land between the house and the pool and in this restricted area. So we asked that this line, right here, you can see, is this is the line here? Chuck? That was added to show where the restrictive covenant went through. So I think that brings us up to date. And I do want to open it to discussion by the planning board. And then Chuck, if you do have any comments or corrections, please let us know. I think this is a small enough group where we can handle the conversation. Just try, just on the board and try not to speak over. Bill, I'll unmute you. And-
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry. Matt or Bill, do you have any comments or questions regarding the updated location of the pool and the overlay of the limit of disturbance?
Does this represent everything that's going to be disturbed within the within the restricted covenant zone? Or is there going to be sheds or additional patios, pool pumps, anything else going out there?
Just what's required with the pool, I'm sure there's going to be a pump.
Where's that going to go?
At the left side of the pool, I would assume.
And how- How much is that going to impact on the on the covenant area?
I mean, I mean, a pump for a pool is two by two and three or four feet tall, I would assume, right?
So no other sheds, nothing else going out there? Just this is all that's going to be?
He told me the pool was, the pump could stay, you know, exposed outside with the, you know, the guy that's going to help me do the pool.
So where is it going to go again then?
I would say on the left end of the pool.
So is it going to be in the restricted covenant or is it going to be outside? Where is it going to be there?
I mean, I would assume, I could speak to him, but I would assume at the end of the left side of the pool.
So we have, it looks like about 15 and a half feet from there to the edge of the pool, but that's not the patio part. And just, just sorry, Matt, to butt in. Would the fence for the pool go around the patio or is it just the pool? I'm not sure of the design.
The fence is going to be the blue highlighted area.
Oh, the fence is going to come here? Okay, the fence is blue. Okay.
Yeah, there's already a chain link fence in the back and on the right side. There's nothing on the left side or in the frontier between the house and the pool.
Okay.
So I mean, it's the same chain link fence that's been there, you know, since Montrose School was there. Rusty, you know, unattractive.
So that's not changing then? It's, you're not going to replace that? You're just going to keep it there?
I am going to replace the fence, yeah.
You are?
Yes.
With what type of fence?
A white vinyl. Up the code.
All right, so it's going to be a six-foot vinyl fence all the way around here then?
The right side, the backside, and the left side. And on the front would be, you know, something that's a little more open, you know, where we could see from the patio near the house.
Is the white fence, Chuck, is the white fence across the back, is that something you discussed with your neighbor?
Yep, yep. Believe me, if there's any way we could do something else, we would. But, you know, they have a beautiful yard, beautiful landscaping, but, you know, you have to have some privacy.
Is there going to be any plantings in there or anything, or what's going to go on? What I'm concerned about is put a big fence up there. What you could, you know, you could pave the whole area, you could do all kinds of stuff, no one's ever going to know about it.
It's all, it's all grass right now. I mean, we're proposing to put a patio right around the pool, that pool area there, and the rest of it's grass. And it's a beautiful landscaped yard right now, sprinkler systems. You know, I mean, Bill came to pictures, you can see the grass. I mean, it's well maintained.
Yeah, the whole purpose of it was to have a buffer between the neighbors, not to have a manicured lawn and rip everything out. So, I mean, that's the issue here is what the intent of it was. And then all the trees were removed, and then basically you just push your yard all the way back there, now you want to put a pool there. So none of this was done, you know, authorized as it should have been. It just went ahead and done. And actually, if the billing department hadn't even let us know this was happening, we would have never known about it. But, so, you know, the intent of this was basically destroyed. So that's what I'm a little-
Well, I mean, you know, I, when I say Dennis Fazio and Paul Revis were at my house, I mean, they were. I mean, does he normally hand out written letters saying that it's okay to cut something down? I don't know that. He did not give me one, I know that. But he was at my house, we had carpenter ants, the trees were infested with them, and he told me it was okay to take them down. I didn't, you know, I'm not debating the fact that they're down. You know, I asked, he said it was okay.
But it's, it's not his call to say you can violate a restrictive covenant.
I'm not, I'm not saying it is, but I mean, I did ask him. He did come to my house and said it was okay. He didn't say go before the town planning board to get approval to cut these down. So I mean, my own ignorance, I guess. But, I mean, I did call the town, asked them to come out and look at them. They came out and said it was okay to take them down.
And Chuck, that was part of our, my question about whether you were an original owner, because I know that was something that was clear in the purchase about not, I mean, I could bring that up too. I know I have the pictures here. But let's, let's just take another look at the covenant. And just so we're, we could see it again. That's not the right one. That's, that's acknowledgement that you have it. So let me go back to the picture. I know we have Montrose School. All right. Plans, Montrose School Lane, Covenant. Too many files. That is, that's the same signing one. Okay. Can you all see the decision in front of you?
No, it's just a picture of my backyard.
Oh, well, it's a nice yard, but let me, sorry, I thought I had that shared.
Didn't look like that when I bought it.
Right. Certification, you can see, and if I scroll down to the part that concerns us, it's, let's see. Conditions. Here it is. So number six, sheet seven, the sheet that we look at of the plan to designate certain areas of the plan relating to the preservation of existing trees by stating existing trees outside approximate limit of soil disturbance area to be saved. Prior to the endorsement of the plan, the applicant shall present a supplementary restrictive covenant relative to the preservation of trees as designated on sheet seven of the plan, which shall be binding on all lot owners and their successors and/or assigns. The board in the Wakefield Town Council shall approve the supplemental restrictive covenant as to form and content. Said supplemental restrictive covenant shall be recorded, and it did get recorded. So that's, that's what we're trying to hold this to, as the area of soil disturbance. And when we look at, go back to the pictures. When we look at this area, the trees that are not there anymore, I guess the planning board, and we can discuss this, it would be good to have some type of plan. For example, when your neighbor on Montrose School Lane removed the trees, then came to the planning board, he was doing drainage and other things with the land. We asked them to do a, to have a landscape architect go through a plan of what trees, because there were some dead trees, what trees were being removed, what trees are being replanted, and then which trees would then be added in place of what was missing. So a couple trees, a couple key trees, which did help with some privacy, but more to the privacy and different than what you have here. The Patty's property sloped down towards their butter in the back. Yours does slope down a little bit, but not to the same where there's grade going down and there's loose dirt and gravel. And when there was a storm or when those trees and different growth were removed, the flora and fauna, that all allowed the dirt to flow into that person's garden, the abutter's garden as well. And it was more of a concern there. So the replanting plan and the new trees that were added were for privacy, but also to hold the earth back. So in this case, we, with the fence that would be six foot high, as you can see, the stockade fence is probably about the same height. So that fence line would extend going across here.
That's not my fence, that's not-
No, understood, understood. But the height, I'm just getting a sense of scale.
Yep.
That this would be the height of the white vinyl fence that would run between the yards. So privacy doesn't seem to be an issue. And if you're putting a pool in with drainage, I'm not sure how this land is going to stay this high or if you're planning on taking some of this away. And I think that's what the board, that's what I would like to see, is to understand how much of this would be taken away, what level is the pool at? Is the pool going to be at the same level of the base of the fence? Or is there a concern where if there is an overflow to the pool, does it run through the neighbor's yard? And that becomes a concern of mine. When it comes to the planting side, if with the fence going around in this area where it's closed off, planting doesn't mean as much. Those trees are already gone. The one tree that's there, it would be great if it was saved. And now with the pool being pushed back along to align with that fence, it seems like that, that tree would not be disturbed. But that's, so my concern, again, has to do with drainage going into the neighbor's yard and the visibility.
So, I mean, I'm a little unfamiliar. I mean, is there such a thing as some type of drainage system around a pool? I don't know.
No, but I think the height of it, where it looks like, and this is where if a landscape architect or somebody did a plan showing the patio, the material, the drainage, where it's going to go to, the pump that Matt mentioned, that we would know what elevation this is at. So we'd be certain that it wouldn't be even a little higher up than this and could cause more runoff into the neighbor's yard and garden.
I don't think, I don't think it'll be higher. I don't know. Bill wants to say something.
Bill, you can talk.
No, I mean, I didn't want to talk over you.
Oh, sorry.
You know, now, with all the chemicals with the pool and everything, is that going to have any effect on that other tree that's the only one left? With the runoff from the pools, because if it comes over, then you have to drain off water. There's chlorine, there's all the fungal stuff. And, you know, is that going to do something to that tree? I don't, I don't know. But I don't think it's going to be good for it. And was, that stump that was on the property that was still there? So, yeah, that was-
That's on the adjacent property.
Oh, that's on the adjacent property, okay.
I think, and Chuck mentioned this last meeting, I think the line of this garden is his property line.
Okay, okay. Another tree that was there before. And that's- Yeah. Yeah, I'm a little concerned about that tree. That's, that's all I have to say for now.
One comment that came up last week, that, again, when I was on site, there's no fences between any of these yards all the way down, and I guess the neighborhood kids run through here. So it is, I do like that the plan, let me go back to this. I think you can all see that. I do like that the plan now is further out and aligned here. So it does preserve this area between here, which looks like it could be about 12 or 15 feet.
Yeah, it's about 15 to 16 feet, yeah.
Yeah. So there's, there's definitely a difference in slope where, how high this is up. So it's just hard, because a lot of it's just speculation now on what the plan will actually be. It would, it's, see, once the pool's in there and we go there and it is higher up, and because it had some reason why it had to be higher up, it's too late. We don't have any, it's hard to look at this plan and say, yes, I'm confident that this won't by accident or drain into the neighbor's yard in the back, or it won't cause an issue to that tree. Although I really like how much further this plan is away from the tree than the previous one. Let me, let me bring up, and I'm not going to show it, I'm just going to read it. Neighbors. So Catherine Van Welly is the email I received from 18 Wharton Park, which is that back property. She said Chuck called me today and explained his plans for a pool, if approved, for a pool if approved. He assured me that the drainage would be done on his street side and not through my yard. He also said he would address the graded area that was done for his hockey rink, which raised the land and caused runoff into our yard. I have no problem with them putting in a pool. Have a lovely evening. Kate Van Welly, 18 Wharton Park. I did respond to her with a question. So thanks for your message. I will present this message to our planning board this evening. Do you recall the three or four large trees that were removed about six years ago? Question mark. If so, did this cause any issues regarding privacy to your property? I'm asking because I know this will be a topic of discussion tonight. Our board is most concerned about abutter's rights. Thank you for taking the time to address the Reeves' pool request regards Bill Spaulding. So that's the back and forth with the letter. So I feel comfortable that you're in good standing with this neighbor. But how do we guarantee that the runoff, the drainage from this pool at the height of this land, which, again, seems about a foot higher than the back property, won't overflow or run into it or cause damage to her garden?
I don't, I don't know.
Does the company that designs the pool, puts it in engineering, all that, do they supply more detailed drawings?
I mean, I don't think so. I mean, it's just a pool company. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't know that.
Okay.
I don't know that.
I haven't put it in a pool before, so I don't know either. Matt, Bill, any comments?
No, I, the only thing I would suggest is that we modify the restrictive covenant area to just remove a portion of around the pool patio. And the rest of it stays in effect and make sure that there's no plumbing installed any further into the restrictive covenant, and there'd be no drainage in the restrictive covenant. The tree is going to remain, and no additional disturbance into restrictive covenant shall take place. But it's still going to be enforced, so any further, you know, building in there will have some say over it. You know, as it is, yeah. Just because you called someone in town and asked them if you can cut a tree down, doesn't mean that gives you authorization to do it. So I'm a little, you know, this is part of the problem, is there's no enforcement on this. I would actually rather the pool get pulled further out of the restrictive covenant to preserve as much as possible. But once that fence goes up, I think we're going to lose any control of that. And, you know, so I'm kind of hesitant to even let it happen at all. I see eight trees that, from the original plan, eight trees that have been cut down in there.
No, there was only, there was only six trees total. We cut down five.
Well, I'm talking about the ones on your neighbor's property too that were cut down also.
Well, I don't have any control to him. I mean, he-
I'm just saying that this is, this is the problem, is people start cutting out there. Everyone thinks it's okay, and suddenly the whole place is cut, grassed over, and people putting pools in. So that's what I'm saying. A lot of trees got cut down out there, so. I mean, these are put in place for a reason, for the abutters that they had to put up with this development, and it's just been violated for almost every single lot out there. So I mean, everyone bought this knowing what was going on out there, but yet still, basically, the intent of this was completely destroyed. So.
So with all this known and what the Reeves have presented, is there anything else as a planning board we need to see?
No, I think we can put enough restrictions on it that, you know, there's going to be no sheds, no additional paving out there. And if there is, it's going to have to be restored with plantings.
Okay. I'm just taking some notes. I'm just taking some notes.
And also, Bill, is there gonna, is there gonna be a block attack to do this to make sure everything's good? And what's going to grow there and is it going to last if they have to put in any plantings?
We're not asking for anything else to grow. What's going to be inside the fences, the pool and
Yeah.
the patio and any steps that might need to go up to the pool.
Right. Okay.
From this area, it's, obviously, the difference in grade from the house up to the flat top here, looks like it might be three plus feet. It's, it's hard to tell. When you're standing there, it's definitely not over your head, but it's, it's a little higher up, maybe like waist high or a little bit more. And then you can see it starts to slope down again. And, and that's the concern I have is where it slopes down. Wondering if, you know, can the pool level be at this fence level? And they're going to be excavating and removing a bunch of dirt and replanting and patio and everything in here. Is they're going to do the fence, is this fence line? And obviously, before this was built up, it must have been that natural roll from here down without this flat top, the little plateau up there where the rink was.
I mean, the, the pool guys must know how much they're going to take away.
Yeah, they have to do some cut and fill and figure it out because they're, they're going to need to get some trucks and remove the, the earth.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing else, as Matt said, there's nothing else we can do about this area except for, you know, force all the neighbors to replant everything. And that's not what we need to do. I think we need and as Matt said, and we've said this in the past with a few different scenarios here, we, we just can't enforce it until in a butter or in this case, the building inspection office let us know, we wouldn't have known. So I, I'm going to jump back to the plan. If anybody needs to see anything else, let me know. But I want to go back to that PDF that I had open actually crashed. So there's the one I want to go to, the plot plan. Okay, this one. So as a board, do we find where the pool sits aligned with the edge here, 16 feet into, you can see it looks like maybe about eight or so feet into the restrictive covenant, and then through the pool, it's here. Is there a different pool design or something? Do we want it pulled back another few feet, which we know is going to push the fence? But is there anything else as a board that we want to do?
That's our choice, moving out of the restrictive covenant would, would be my choice.
You agree with him?
So this tree is sitting in the back. We know the drip line, well, I know drip line, it's a tight tree, there's not a lot of limbs that overhang. And thinking about that drip line coming down from the extent of the trees above, of the branches above, it, it sits, it, it's hard to, again, speculate from the pictures. But I did get one picture that you can see. This one, those tree limbs don't come out much further. There it is. And you can see it's, it's right about here. It's hard to see, not in the plan with an aerial, but it's not cutting in there. So I can only hope that the, the roots of that large tree are not going any further than the drip line. So I'm, I'm honestly, I'm fine with right where this pool is with the patio around it. I know, Matt, if we're going to push this outside, would it be the whole pool and patio outside the restrictive that you would want or half and half?
I'm just saying, you know, I would prefer it further out, that's all. So any, you know, any further away from out of the restrictive covenant would be my preference.
All right, Chuck, have you looked at any plans to how far this pool can come closer to your house without ruining the free run of the backyard and all that?
Well, if it comes much further, we're going to have to just fence in the whole yard. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, it's, it can't, it won't be avoided. Like you say, I mean, that's about 15 feet there right now. You know, you came out another five, you're talking just a 10 foot, you know, run through, you know, walk through, whatever you want to call it. I mean,
Right.
we would just have to fence in the whole thing, so.
And I wish I got a shot lined up with the fence.
Well, that fence, I have like that orange, that orange bag is the corner of the fence right there.
Right, right. You can almost see that's where this line that comes across. Right here.
Yep.
And that's where the pool would be. And then another, like we said, like 12 feet or so is where the fence. 12 or 15. Bill, any comments about the location of the pool?
No, I like it further out like Matt said.
Right, do we want to figure out how much further out can it come without having to fence in the whole yard? To max that out? So if there is a distance of 10 feet, feet between the pool and the fence and then another 10 feet, and I wish I could draw it to scale on this or had something that could. Just looking at some of the tools. Let me see, it's converting it to edible text. Not what I wanted. Yeah, I'm not going to be able to mark it up. I'm used to different tools, but if, if we could. This line here, I mean, there's the house line. If the distance from here to here is 30 feet, I'm just looking at this 25. Need a little bit less. Can the pool slide further this way and still allow for a fence to be 10 feet from the pool and still allow passage through? Can the pool be turned? This is where the, the design of the pool, I don't know, of course, we don't want to cause any more expense, but what's the, what's the pool if it can be? Is there a shape of a pool that can change it? So they have to be rectangular?
You asking me, Bill?
No, I'm just, I guess I'm just throwing it out there as a conversation point because looking for a solution so you can have an answer, so you can move on. Have you looked at any other shapes, Chuck?
Yeah, I mean, a kidney shaped pool, but I mean, the ideal spot is still to put it in the back there.
Right.
To keep moving it closer to the house. I mean, if, if I have to move it closer to the house, I'll put it right up against my neighbor's property longwise and I won't have to deal with the planning board at all because nothing will be in that restrictive zone. But it's not a good spot for it because that requires fencing in the whole yard. And to, you know, minimize, you know, cutting off the whole yard, that's why we were looking to put it in that back area. I apologize about the trees. I did not get anything in writing, you know, but I mean, that land's, you know, that land, that land was a mess, you know? So we cleaned it up. I don't know.
But he's going to, say, if he's going to leave the pool where he, where he's got to propose, that's fine, we're just going to put restrictive covenant, you know, we're going to have some restrictions on it. I want to make sure there's an as-built to make sure it's built as, as proposed. That tree's going to remain out there. There's no additional cutting of, of neighbor's limbs that hang over. And there needs to be some enforcement on this because nothing's been enforced to this point. And I don't, even if we put restrictions on it, I don't know what's going to happen. So, you know, we need to have some agreement that what's going to be built out there is this and it's going to remain that way. But I want to just modify the, the covenant. So we still have some authority out there. So if, you know, the place gets completely paved over and there's all kinds of patios and fire pits and sheds and cabanas out there that you can get it rectified later.
So Matt, instead of no sheds, no, all that, so I have as-built required, meaning after the construction is done, we need to see a plan of what's there. That way we have it as a record. No tree, no tree disturbance. Well, I know it's only one tree, but no further disturbance of any trees or plantings.
Or limbs.
Yep, no additional cutting of limbs. Got that. And location of pool. So this is all location of pool patio and fence as proposed. 622. Is approved. With understanding that the owner, Mr. Reeves, will provide as-built drawings. Will not perform any tree.
Well, well, Bill, we'll talk through this and, Bill.
I just want, well, yes.
Well, well, you know, we'll wordsmith this and, and get it up to him. But that's the gist of it.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure there's no surprises in this. Is there anything else where? Trying to think of anything else. I'm still concerned about the drainage and the elevation. No additional structures?
There'll be, you know, drainage, there'll be no drainage outlet pipes out there or anything like that, so.
Okay. Pipes, outlet pipes, no additional structures? Okay.
Just in that restricted zone.
Yes, and no additional structures in the restrictive covenant.
Just in that restricted area.
Yeah, we only have, Chuck, we only have jurisdiction over what's happening inside.
I get it.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure.
Right, right. Yeah. No, we don't have any control over the rest of your property now. It's only inside there. Okay. So we'll write this up and send it out to you.
So, so what is, what is my next step? I mean, we're, as long as we put it where we propose it, we're okay?
Yes.
We're going to write the decision and, yeah, as, as, I mean, we haven't, once the decision's written and endorsed, then yeah, then you, you can put it there.
So then we just have to, we have to apply for the permit to the building department? Okay, all right.
But we're also going to want to have an as-built to make sure it was put where, where it was proposed. Now, the town usually doesn't require as-bills for things and that's part of the issue is that people propose one thing and they build something else and no one ever follows up on it. In this case, we are going to follow up on it. And at that point, we still have authorization to go back and have this restrictive covenant, this area restored to its natural state, which is what it was before. So we still have that. We do have some teeth in this and we may exercise that option. If, you know, if the thing's built way back and it's all paved in there.
Okay.
So you're going to send me something in writing, correct?
Yes.
When can I expect that?
Well, I'd like to, after we finish with this part, we should draft it up and review it as a board and then we have to endorse it. I don't think, that's not something we have to wait for the next meeting.
Yeah, we can draft around.
Yeah, we can draft, so we don't, we don't have to wait to the second Tuesday in July to agree on. It's something we can take care of this week.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
We move back to our agenda. So that was really the only thing on our agenda for this evening. Topics not anticipated by the chair. Well, we had a town meeting and it was a little over six hours and the planning board was asked to speak on five different warrants. The one that wasn't anticipated was the one for Walton Lane. And I believe I spoke out of turn on it because it wasn't for an approval of the street, of the, of like a paper road becoming a street. It was really for the betterment of the street, which I looked back in my notes and I had something listed about Walton Lane and we discussed it, but I didn't have any detail. So I apologize, but I don't, really don't think we should have, I should have spoke in behalf of the planning board to recommend the betterment and the money allocated for Walton Lane.
That's just part of what we went through last year, so it is. Because that was one of my concerns is they wanted acceptance of the street before the betterment was done. And Renaud was at our meeting and we discussed that. And we got assurances that even though we approved the, the acceptance of the street before it was done, that it was going to be carried out. And this is part of it, so I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, because as I, I checked with Paul Reviss and Tom Mullin, town council chimed in, and we are not required to get involved with the betterment, but we are required to get involved with, if it's becoming a street. So that was part of my confusion. I was just caught off guard. I didn't expect it to come up. That's something that we would have to. I thought the betterment needed to be completed and then it would come back and then we would review it as a, a street that, or something that can be a public street. That's one thing at town meeting. The other item at town meeting that came up, and if, if you were watching at home, Bill, the zoning bylaws, two of them were approved by two-thirds and two of them were not approved by two-thirds.
Right.
So North Ave was not approved. And, you know, Matt, Matt also got up and spoke about how some of that process happened and what made the difference. And as a board, I felt like we had a good compromise there where we looked at the walkability of, of North Ave and by having the single residents go to general residents, we're using less of that frontage because of the common driveway and also allowing three duplexes to be built in there, or three, two families, which also would have a sidewalk. And it was 300 and, I can't remember, 325 feet of frontage, I'd have to look, that would be sidewalk. And that would run from the new apartments that are being built, which are also, from what we heard from the town engineer and from attorney McGrail, they would have sidewalks as well. So that would run to Knights of Columbus with a full sidewalk. And I'm sorry to say that didn't pass, so we will not be getting that sidewalk, not from the developer anyway. And the land from behind that was being given to the town for conservation, that's not going to happen either as far as everything that we agreed to is off the table. So who knows what will happen with that land now? We'll probably see it back as three single family homes, I imagine. Any comments on that?
Yeah, and they're not going to be the 750,000. Yeah, and they're not going to be the $750,000 nice homes. They're probably going to be some vinyl box without a garage and three driveways sitting there. They're going to look like, well, they're going to be expensive in my book, but they're not going to look it. But
Right.
you know what? That's nothing we can do about it. That's the right of the owners to do that. So they get to do it. And Tom can blame us for it. So.
That's all right. And the other bylaw that did not pass was the bylaw zoning change for business district. That would, we restricted the height, but the other items would still have to go in front of, and maybe this is my misunderstanding, but I thought I understood it clearly that any change from table two in our zoning bylaws, it would still have to go in front of the ZBA for a special permit. And I'm not sure if that was addressed properly. And I, I believe I botched it and said, well, it was only for financial institutions. Well, it's not. It's for anything that would become under the business district for zoning. But still, any of these items underneath here would still need to go in front of the ZBA if they were if they needed, so this is where I got confused. It's like, well, isn't that what a variance is? Why do they need a special permit to go in front of it? Is a variance different than a special permit when going in front of the ZBA? And watching difference in my experience as an architect, I it seems like it's handled the same way, whether it's a special permit or a variance. Meaning it still requires approval and review. I don't feel bad that it was not approved. I feel like in some cases, listening to the public during the meeting, it was good to, to hear a little bit more from the public. And as we've discussed in the, this board and these meetings in the past, I really wish we had more public involvement. Or even WCAT picked us up and televised it. That way we can get some more public contribution to these decisions we make. That's the two at town meeting that did not pass. There was a reoccurring theme with the public spoke up at the microphone that the town, certain amount of people, the overdevelopment of the town, how could that be controlled or regulated? And as a planning board, I know we don't have a lot of power to what is being built for apartment buildings and different things. And we only review subdivisions, but part of our role too is to create a master plan or some type of plan for the town. And I know there's, there's history of, of what's been developed and what Paul Reviss has worked on in the past. But it's something that as a board, maybe this summer we can look at and get together and look at some other towns and how similar size, similar distance from Boston that are dealing with overbuilding and overdevelopment and how they're approaching it. So that was my takeaways from town meeting. Except, well, one more. I felt so there being, it's the first time in a building with that many people for so long. So I couldn't wait to get out of there at the end. A little over six hours straight. So that was a lot, but it did seem to go well. So. Those are my comments. I don't know if anybody has anything they want to add.
I got nothing more.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
All right. Well, this is the smallest agenda we've had since last summer, I think. So if, if there's not anything else, I know we have have to say this is our last. This is our last week or so with Paul Reviss as town planner. And if you didn't hear, at town meeting, his position by name is not being filled. The town is looking to fill as a, as the position and to keep his appropriated, if that's the right term for his salary on the book. So it, it doesn't go away as a position, but the new economic developer position will also take on tasks that the town planner has now. And that was another takeaway from town meeting. So I think I, I'd like to send a letter to town council, specifically Chair Santos and Mr. DiNaco, they both, at town meeting, they both put together. I was told at town meeting that they put together the job description. So I'd like to get a hand on that or handle on that to see what it is and so we can understand more of how overlap with our. Any thoughts?
I was a little surprised to hear that they're going to be, the person's going to be doing the town planning's job too. So I don't know if it's actually fact or if it's just a little bit of spin that was put on it that time meeting.
I felt the same way. That's why I'd like to get the description and I'll write a letter or email to town council. I guess one last thing that might be coming up that we need to prepare for. When did we present to town council? Was that in November? Or October of last year?
Sure.
I wonder if it's something we should prepare for. Like last time, we kind of got lucky. I just happened to be watching one of the town council meetings and they had the ZBA present. And then at the next meeting, like, we should really think about preparing for this. And wouldn't you know it? I think, was it on a Thursday? They asked us to present that Monday. So I think it would be great to be prepared. So we'll get that on the agenda for one of the next meetings too, just to review.
Let's just ask them if they're planning on doing it again and give us a heads up. That's all. I mean, simple as that.
Yeah, but I want to be prepared. Right. That's it, I promise. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second up.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.